Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if the clerk will call the roll.
Supervisor Johnson, Supervisor Pat Breslin, Supervisor Headland, Supervisor Score, Supervisor Steen is excused, Supervisor Zons, Supervisor Gary Bjork, Supervisor Willsey, Supervisor Quinn, Supervisor Rogers, Supervisor Whitzel, Supervisor Kneer, Supervisor Barrier, Supervisor Calabrese, Supervisor Keter, Supervisor Vogel, Supervisor Sean Breslin, Supervisor Vandermeulen, Supervisor Robinson, Supervisor Morehouse, Supervisor Hagan is online, okay. Supervisor Thomas, Supervisor Procknow, Supervisor Gilbert, Supervisor Larry Bjork, Supervisor Bauer, Supervisor Lino, Supervisor Hartong, Chair McCullough.
Here. All right, next order of business is the approval of the minutes. If no one has an objection, I'll just put them together as one approval for both. Do I have a motion? Supervisor Morehouse, Supervisor Zons. Any comments or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes, minutes are approved. Presentations of petitions, memorials, and other communications recognizing retired employee Annette Weiss, or I believe it twice, DHS, thirty-two years, are you here? Oh, that's too bad. Thirty-two years is a great deal of service to the county and we will certainly miss her experience and all of the institutional knowledge that goes out the door with her. We will make sure we get her her plaque. Moving right along then, public comments. We're going to start with the presentation by the Elk Creek Solar Project. If you are ready, come on up.
That's all set up.
Should be ready.
Yo, everyone can hear us, okay?
Yep.
Excellent.
Make sure you make sure you get picked up on the mic.
Great. Well. Excellent. Thanks so much for supervisors. Really our privilege to be here to talk with you tonight. Trying to keep it as brief as possible. My name is Dylan Stickney with Tier Energy Development Renewables, also known as TED Renewables. Came in today to talk with you about a project that we've been working on for a little while called the Elk Creek Solar Project. Material on the screen here. We did also in the past, I think it was about two weeks ago, we mailed some information to the county offices. Hopefully that made its way around. Of course, we're happy to share any of this as a follow-up to the meeting tonight, too.
And my name is Ian Edwards, developer on this project. Just before we jump in, I wanted to introduce ourselves as a company. I'm a Western Kansas farm kid turned developer in tier energy. TED stands for Tier Energy Development. Our ultimate parent company is called Tier Energy. Tier Energy is an independent power producer based in Kansas City, an independent power producer. We are ultimately owned by a Toshu Corp, which is a Fortune 250 trading house out of Tokyo. Interior Energy generally has been a developer and asset management company for conventional generation. We've made a lot of forays into natural gas generation. That's where a bulk of our portfolio still is as tier energy. However, Toshu has moved into the renewable space and tier energy development is the development arm of that of that of these entities.
So I suppose enough about us and just to introduce Eric Callisto here. Eric's out of Madison with the firm Michael Best. He's our attorney that's helping us move this project along here. Yeah, so I guess reason we're here tonight to start at a pretty broad stroke here. You know, seeing a tremendous growth of opportunity created from the clean energy economy and the shift that our nation, our country, states in particular like Wisconsin are seeing in that transition towards renewable energy projects, all things associated. You know, it's much, much larger than just renewable projects. Here in Wisconsin, we've seen small-scale solar projects getting built over the past decade and more than that, just started to see some of the larger utility scale projects getting built in the state of Wisconsin. Some great news, some great media that's covering some of these projects and the opportunities that are being presented by them. So we're, you know, really just here to help outline what those opportunities are, how a community like Dunn County, the town of Springbrook where our project is located, which we'll show in a minute, can really try and capture and seize on some of those opportunities. And it's it's not just economic, right? It's not just landowner income. It's not just, you know, developer profits, right? And it's not even just taxable revenue or revenues to local governments, local municipalities, tremendous amount of other opportunities as well that come from these projects. But again, trying to move right along here. Some general information for those that aren't familiar, what a solar project looks like, some of the key components of the equipment that are part of these projects, part of these solar facilities, solar farms, as they're often referred to. This is pretty standard of what you might see. And a couple of things that I'll just note here. You know, a lot of people ask, how are they installed? How are they affixed to the ground? Is there concrete? You can see these are pretty standard galvanized steel H-piles driven straight down into the soil. Solar facilities like this, very low form of of development, low impact form of development, really minimal impact to the ground itself, to the land itself. And, you know, to the extent where a lot of folks see it as a way of preserving farm ground for a long time, right? These projects are typically thirty-five years in length, sometimes a little more. Typically, you know, no, no more than fourteen feet or so off the ground. You know, less than a one-story building. But again, some other, some other information, just generally about what these, what these tend to look like, what you could expect from our project, the Elk Creek Solar Project. So just some, some basic specs here. We've proposed this project at three hundred megawatts. Again, utility scale solar development project. We're just starting to see the size and scope of projects getting built in Wisconsin. They've been getting developed and built and operating in dozens of other states across the country for for years now. Really, the reason that we're just starting to see in the Midwest advances in technology and economics, really, it all comes down to economics. Can a, can a solar project like this at this scale produce power at a competitive rate without subsidies, without grants, and compete with conventional generation, et cetera, et cetera? The entire footprint of our project estimated to be about sixteen hundred acres. At the end of the day, it's all in Dunn County and it's all located in Springbrook. Now, we're hoping to begin construction as early as the spring of twenty twenty-four and be operational as early as the fall of twenty twenty-five. And one key piece of information here is part of the reason that we're in Dunn County and working on this project in Dunn County is because of existing infrastructure. Excel Energy has a high voltage transmission line, runs right through Springbrook, Springbrook. Many of you probably have seen it or or no properties that have towers on them. Key piece of our project where we're proposed to interconnect and generate, you know, load that generated power onto the system. So where we're at today, and we've been working on this project for a little while now, where we're at today is being fortunate enough to work with some great landowners in Dunn County. Having gone out over the past twelve, eighteen months or so and done a whole slew of surveys, studies, fieldwork, diligence, and steps in this process, in this, you know, in our business, to arrive at a preliminary layout that you're looking at here on the screen. Again, this is about sixteen hundred acres. And what we see as a feasible and buildable, constructible project. Now, on the left there, you can see an example, you know, just a subset of some of the field surveys that we already have conducted are currently finalizing. And what we see as the proper way to go about development of these projects, to have minimal, if if any, impact on the ground, on the local environment, the ecosystem, wildlife habitat. Take the right steps to to moving a project like this forward and not just because it's the right way to go about it, but of course, there's a regulatory process as well. In Wisconsin, many of these surveys that you're looking at on the screen are required by the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin. So there's a very rigorous, very transparent and objective process for applying to build a project like this in the state. Anything over a hundred megawatts, which is, you know, again, our project is proposed at three hundred megawatts. Anything over a hundred megawatts is considered a wholesale power generation facility, goes through the the process of what's called the certificate of public convenience and necessity through the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin. That process takes about a year. We're hoping to submit our application in the next month, in October, at some point. Process will take, you know, again, over a year for the PSC, the DNR to review our application, review all the studies and surveys that we've conducted, our plans, our proposed construction plans, you know, operational plans, maintenance plans, et cetera. Again, very transparent process. All those documents will be publicly available on the PSC website. We've already been assigned a docket number where anybody, anybody in the public, you know, county board supervisors as well can can go and see all these surveys and whatnot. A three-person commission ultimately with energy expertise in all sorts of power generation projects will decide to either approve or deny our certificate. And ultimately, that will authorize construction of this project. Anything I missed there, Eric? Eric's, you know, again, Eric's been through this process a number of times, various different types of power generation projects in Wisconsin. Certainly, you know, I'm sure there will be questions about that, that as well. But some common questions about these projects, again, this was, there's a much more lengthy, frequently asked question document that was shared with, you know, in the in the mail and and we've got some resources on our website that will soon be published, I think, in the next week or so. And again, more than happy to follow up with a lot more information and whatnot, answers to some of the more commonly asked questions. An outline of project benefits, again, tremendous amount of benefits and opportunity that these projects can bring to a local community, to landowners that are willing to host the project. You know, really, just, just all around. A few of them listed here. I think one of the more measurable benefits that a project like this can bring does tend to be the economic benefit. A couple highlights here that you can see a project that this size estimated to create two hundred to three hundred construction jobs for a one to two, two-year period of time. Thereon after that, for a thirty-five-year lifespan, three to five permanent jobs, right? Quite honestly, that's probably the 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 biggest downside to a project like this is that it doesn't create more, more than three to five permanent jobs, but they're they're fairly low maintenance, monitored remotely, maintained, you know, landscaping vegetation wise a few times a year, maintained from an operational and technical standpoint, you know, visited, maintained and whatnot every few weeks. But again, fairly low maintenance. Ultimately, this will be a two hundred and ninety-plus million dollar investment in this project to develop it, construct it, get it to, get it to operational. That's an investment in Dunn County as we see it. And ultimately, the revenue that Dunn County can expect from this project, formulaic revenue at twenty, over, over twenty-four million dollars over that thirty-five-year period. And lastly, I guess this is this is what we've seen as precedent in state. What we've voluntarily offered is a one-point-two million dollar additional benefit to the Elk Mountain Area School District. Again, our project is squarely in just that school district. We'd like to benefit the schools in any way we can. This next slide is going to give you kind of an overview of these revenues that we've calculated from this project. And this is not just our calculation, this is based on a state statute of a formulaic revenue share back to the communities that host these projects. So our project, once operational, the property itself and any, any energy property in the state of Wisconsin is there is then exempt from the local tax rule. The project will pay a license fee directly to the state. Those fees are then redistributed back to the local county and town. So based on that formula, and again, this is all, you know, Wisconsin state law, based on that formula, it's going to be approximately five hundred thousand dollars a year to the town of Springbrook, seven hundred thousand dollars a year to Dunn County. And then our voluntary offer to Elk Mountain Area School District of sixty thousand dollars a year. You know, you can see some of these numbers start to add up over thirty-five years, for sure. Again, this is just one of the more measurable and certainly one of the largest benefits of these projects is the economics behind them. Certainly love to to unpack this a little bit and answer questions from the folks about this. Again, it's, it's very formulaic as far as how the state shares that revenue and redistributes it back to the local communities. And I guess, you know, we've been, we've been through quite a bit of tax analysis and looking at how this measures up to what is current. I think, you know, agricultural land in the county, certainly. These, these numbers are are quite a bit higher, but just to to give you an idea of of what to expect. So I guess at the end of the day, we're here to create a relationship with Dunn County, with the town of Springbrook, with the local community. We want to be good partners to this community as far as the Elk Creek Project is concerned and introducing this to Dunn County as a real positive with a tremendous amount of benefit that could really touch a lot of different parts of Dunn County. We've proposed a joint development agreement. This is basically just a way to really memorialize the benefits to Dunn County, the benefits to the town of Springbrook, hold ourselves accountable for the commitments and best practices during construction, having a decommissioning and deconstruction plan in place with financial surety behind that plan. You know, how we're preserving the ground and minimizing any impact to farm tile, to things like that. You know, just the way that that we, we see it as a good way to engage with Dunn County, engage with the town of Springbrook, create a relationship that we can lean on and point to and and really kind of work with over the course of the next couple of years while we're approaching construction, over the course of the next thirty-five years, hopefully while this project is operational. So again, we're, you know, excited to be here, excited to meet all of you. You know, certainly love to have, you know, more, more conversation individually, answer questions, talk on the phone, virtual meetings, you know, in this day and age, in-person meetings, Ian and myself will be here quite a bit. A project here, Eric, as I introduced, some local representatives, local consultants that we've brought onto the team that can be, of course, more than available, have been through this process with a number of other projects in Wisconsin as well. We will have a local representative, you know, with with defined hours, going to open up an office space somewhere in Menominee, we're shopping for one right now. If anyone knows of any good office space release. We've published a Facebook page. Sometimes a primary, primary source of news for a lot of folks these days. And again, we'll have a website, a phone number, an email address, you know, our, our contact information as well. Want to be available, want to be very transparent about this project. We're certainly excited about it. We think it, you know, certainly fits well with with the landowners that we've been fortunate enough to work with, certainly. And, you know, we'd love to answer questions that you folks have. We'll stop rambling here.
Okay, thank you. Nick, what do you think? Or can we do five minutes of questions or? All right.
It's no discussion, just information gathered.
So if if any of you have questions that you would like to ask them right now in an information gathering way. Supervisor Headland?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You, you mentioned a, a deconstruction plan. How are solar panels, panels recycled?
It's a great question. Yeah. So I mean, we're, we're starting to see solar panel recycling as a growing industry in itself, right? Like I mentioned, utility scale projects have really become economically commercial and economically feasible in the last ten or fifteen years. So we're starting to see some of the larger projects go online, get built, and of course, they have a very long lifespan of thirty-five plus years. But again, the recycling industry itself, right? I mean, these, these, these panels are more than eighty percent by weight, glass and aluminum, recyclable materials. And there are facilities that are popping up all over the U.S., you know, all over the world, really, to deconstruct these panels. You know, recycle every, every bit of material that is possible.
Supervisor Lino.
Thank you, Mr. Couple of questions. Who will be the primary customer for the power generated by the unit?
Yeah, it's a great question. Critical part of the project, too. Best thing about solar projects at this size, predictable. They're stable and predictable. We can study and there's historical records of how much sunlight shines in Dunn County on an annual basis. We can predict how much power that's going to generate. And and the benefit to that is being able to offer a power contract to a customer for more than your typical two or three or maybe five-year wholesale contract that a large corporation or a utility would typically procure their wholesale power availability. So we typically see these contracts at fifteen, twenty, sometimes twenty-five years. Most likely scenario would be a utility, Excel Energy or another utility in Wisconsin or the Midwest region. The Midwest energy market, known as MISO, M-I-S-O, allows for corporate power purchase agreements as well. So it could be a large corporation, credited corporation, of course, that has the power demand in the Midwest region, somebody like a General Mills or, yeah, General Mills or General Motors or a Microsoft or a Google that has that power demand in this general region and, you know, can contract for it and stand behind it and know that they're going to have that demand for the next fifteen years plus.
Thank you. And there's one additional question. You had said something about battery storage. What will be the technology regarding that battery storage? You know, is it going to be, you know, water storage pumped up and and then that type of thing? And then also the type of battery storage I'm very interested in. And then also, how long would that battery storage be able to maintain power from the system?
Yeah, I can take this one. The battery technology that we intend to use is lithium ion. That is industry standard across the board. You know, almost any battery that you see developed at scale is currently lithium ion. There are some additional technologies that are being explored but are not developed to scale and economic at this point. So lithium ion technology at a four-hour duration, meaning that the battery could dispatch the full nameplate of its capacity for four continuous hours.
Okay, so just four hours?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Supervisor Larry Bjork.
My farm was on your map between E and C, so I've been hearing plenty about it. And my question had to do also with the battery storage. And is the battery storage part of the on the farm location with us or to substation there on the simple property?
Yeah, if I'm understanding your question correctly, the battery components will be dispersed across the project site. It will not be in a singular location. They will be co-located with our solar inverters across the entire site.
Thank you.
Supervisors Ons.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just curious. You mentioned a lifespan of the project of like thirty-five years. Is it, why do you stop after thirty-five years? If it's, I mean, if it's, you know, productive and it's generating electricity, why not go forty, fifty or or not have a, have that? Or do you intend like after thirty-five years renewing it or something?
Yeah, another great question. Panels themselves are generally warranted for about thirty-five years. That does not mean they stop working after thirty-five years. It means their output reaches a point where they are no longer warranted. Generally, that's about eighty-five percent. So the potential does exist that you could swap those panels out for new panels and continue life. Now, another component of that is the landowner. If the landowner signs up for a thirty-five-year lease, it is their wish to then move the project back into productive farm ground, then we would need to honor those wishes as part of our agreement. So there, there are a couple of different, there are a couple of different threads, but there is, there is the possibility that the landowner does want to increase or does want to continue the project, that the project then could pursue alternate panel manufacturers or replacing those panels to continue that life. Because the infrastructure will still, will still remain and will still be there.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Sure.
Supervisor Calabrese.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The monies that go to Springbrook and Dunn County and your donation to the Elk Mountain School District. How do they shift over the thirty-five years and do they? Are they recalculated annually because of state statute? And how's that sixty thousand dollars going to look in?
Yeah, good question. Obviously, an important topic for the community. The amount is actually set by statute. So that amount has been in place. I got this question previously and I should have had an answer by tonight. I apologize. How long it's been in place? It's been in place for many decades. It started out as a statute that gave two thousand dollars per megawatt for utility scale generation in the state. There was then an adder to the statute that threw on an extra two thousand dollars for certain kinds of generation of which solar is one. So basically, it went sent renewable generation. So the amount itself is actually set by statute. So there is no, there's no inflationary enhancer year over year. The amount is the same. It's not changed for many, many years. I guess that that begs the question of, well, can't the statute be changed? And that's certainly possible, right? It's tough to imagine just sort of based upon the things I've seen on these topics and the experience here in the last four or five years of that statute changing at all. The reason it's there is for the reason it's been there for many decades, right? It provides a lot of value to the local community. Dylan alluded to it. We've done some analysis that suggests the tax revenue that's currently being collected by the county, by the school district, by other local entities, is somewhere north of about ten thousand dollars a year for farmland. And as you know, farmland is, has a relatively low tax burden for the owners. Obviously, at one-point-two million dollars a year, it's substantially more. And that was a legislative call to make sure that communities that take on the, the burden of these in their community have a reasonable payback.
Supervisor Gary Bjork and then Supervisor Robinson. And then I'm going to wrap this one up.
Okay. Thank you. My question was very similar like to John's. Is that set in stone, that seven hundred thousand dollars to the county? That can't be, uh, because I was looking more of a percentage of what your profit is.
No.
No.
It is set in stone, to the extent that statutes are set in stone, right? The amount is, and this is actually a relatively simple project. If we had a project that was in multiple counties and multiple municipalities, towns and villages, the formula gets a little more complicated, but it is formulaic. So it's based upon how many megawatts times four thousand dollars. So three hundred megawatts times four thousand dollars is one-point-two million dollars a year. And in this case, the statute dictates that seven hundred thousand go to the county and five hundred thousand go to the town. That money can be used without strings. I mean, it doesn't have any obligation to be used by any particular way. It comes from the Department of Administration of the State.
Supervisor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Have you had any contracts ever be broken? And if so, does that result in a loss? Or how do you, do you find a new contract?
Which, which types of contracts are you?
For the solar, for the solar power.
Like an off-take agreement?
Yep, yep.
Like the sale of the electricity?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a good question. I mean, you know, so our, our company specifically, we haven't experienced that. We haven't had a power contract that has been broken. As you can imagine, I mean, a, a contract like that, that's looking at energy procurement for either a utility or a large corporation over that period of time. There's, there's massive, you know, dollar figures there. There's huge liability on on both sides of that table. And so there's a lot of levers that, you know, you're really only signing that agreement if we know we can provide that power for fifteen, twenty years. And the other party knows that they're going to need it for fifteen, twenty years and they can budget for it. Right? Again, the predictability of these projects is really one of the biggest benefits from the commercial side that a General Motors, where today they're contracting their electricity every three years, based on what the market is offering, based on what either you, the utility rates are offering or what the wholesale rates are showing on a year-to-year basis for this project, that's it's going to be this set rate for the next fifteen years. You can put that budget item away and know exactly how much that's going to cost.
Thank you, gentlemen. I would encourage any supervisors who have further questions to contact you and have more discussion. I certainly will be checking in with you myself.
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll, we'll follow up with Mrs. Corporala, make sure that all the information's available and our fact sheets and information and whatnot. Certainly encourage you folks to reach out.
Great. Thanks so much.
Thank you all.
Do we have any further public comment? Okay. Seeing none, I will move on to item seven, appointments. You have one in front of you, zoning board of adjustment, reappoint Crystal Helverson. This appointment needs board confirmation. Do I have a motion? Supervisor Headland, Supervisor Quinn. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Appointment is taken care of. Report of county manager, purchase orders over forty thousand. Chris, are you with us and have enough voice to?
We'll give it a shot.
All.
Yeah, good luck. So I have to say, I started my career in Dunn County by interviewing. I started my career in Dunn County by interviewing for. Maybe it's not going to work. I interviewed. I interviewed for my job on nine eleven. But it ended up being a great place to work for twenty-one years. So I'm hoping that starting my first official county board meeting. Without a voice is a precursor to another, hopefully not twenty-one years, but some long period of time of good experience. Um. So, um, Nick started a nice process of giving you a little bit more information about the. Purchase orders. Try to do that as long as I can. Um. So I'm not sure which one that you're looking for, um, looking at first, but, um, the one that's a bit longer. Um, has. A number of items. I assumed that the snowmobile aids, um, numbers were self-explanatory. The structures unlimited is a Wisconsin DOT project to build a salt shed. At the, um, oh, oh, the county's O'Gally shop. The DOT will reimburse the full dollar amount for that once it's completed and it's scheduled to be built in early October. And then.
If, if you would like, um, everyone's got it in front of them. We could, we could simplify this. And then if anyone has any questions, we can save your voice a little bit.
We could do that.
So does anyone have any questions for Chris on the purchase orders? Seeing none. Um, I think you're off the hook on talking about them.
All right, fair enough. You don't want to listen to me talking like Marge Simpson for ten minutes.
Well, it's, it's more that, um, if you need to talk later, it would be better to preserve your voice for that.
True, true. Um, yes, okay. And then the second item, just a quick update on the twenty twenty-three budget. His executive committee met earlier this month. Uh, we brought forward some options of ways that we could. Uh, narrow the gap between the ask and the amount of resources there are to fill the gap. Um, and we're tasked with coming back with a couple of different scenarios. For the next meeting, which will take place in early October. With the goal of coming to the county board meeting with the final project, final product, uh, in October. And then ultimately for its, um, official passage in early November. And that's all I've got.
All right. Any questions on the, uh, the budget update? Seeing none, um, you can rest your voice for a bit, Chris. Um, reports of departments. Corporation council, you should have the report as a part of your packet if you have. Any questions, um, I'm sure that Nick would be happy to answer them. This may be a very brief meeting. All right, uh, Fair Board. There you are. Come on up. Well, you may not have to, but well, does anyone have any questions for the Fair Board? Okay, Mike.
Report kind of made me feel like I was back at the fair. And that's always a really good feeling. So, uh, you did a great job with the fair this year and thank you for this report.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, this is going to be a brief meeting. You are off the hook. Facilities. Scott here? Oh, Scott's online. Okay. Does anyone have any question on the facilities report? All right. No questions for Scott either. Uh, reports of committees. Um, committee on administration. Presentation of the outside auditors report for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Uh, Vaughn?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, including your packet are really two parts. The one part is the, uh, executive summary. And the other is the actual, uh, eighty-plus page, uh, report that was prepared. By Clifton Allen Larson. Um, I believe we have. Uh, representative.
Online, I believe.
Online. Okay, Chris. Okay. And so, uh, uh, at this point, uh. I would ask that, uh, be the, the board to allow us to present April Anderson. From Clifton Allen Larson and she will go over the summary report. Uh, April, if that's okay with you, everybody here on the board.
Without objection? Okay, April.
Okay, um, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. Um, and so as Vaughn said that you should have what is called the executive audit summary. Available to you. I don't, is it available or should I share my screen with the information as well?
I gave you the, uh, the, uh, permissions, April. I think sharing your screen is always a helpful way to walk through it.
Okay. Okay, so are you able to see my screen now?
Yes, we are.
And it's the executive audit summary. Okay. And as, um, he said, the, the audit report is over eighty pages. And so. What we like to do is, um, pull out what we think are the key pieces of information from the audit results to share with you. Um, and so that is what I'll be focusing on that today in this executive audit summary. So here on the audit findings and results page. You'll, the second paragraph there, the audit opinion, you'll see that we issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements for the county. And so that means it's a clean opinion. It's the highest opinion that you can receive. And so that's obviously what you're striving for. And that means that your financial statements are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And all of the governmental accounting standards that you have to follow as a governmental entity. So. Um, uh, again, that's what you're striving for and that is, uh, good results there. The next section that we go to is on internal controls. And so here you'll see, um, as we do go through the audit, we are required to. Identify any deficiencies that we see in the internal control process and to communicate that with governance and management. And so here you'll see that we report three different deficiencies. Uh, two material weaknesses, which are considered the, kind of the most significant type of internal control deficiency. And then one significant deficiency that's considered less severe. Um, the, all three of these are recurring ones for the county. And so, uh, if you've been on the board before, you've heard. Me talk about this before. Um, if you're new to the board, these aren't new this year. They, um, are very common because of the size and makeup of, of the entity and who is working in the financial realm of things. And so the first one is the annual financial reporting under GAAP. And so what this means is that governance and management are technically responsible for the financial statements. Um, however, it, it takes a lot of time and preparation to put the, the full audit report together. And again, there's lots of rules and regulations that you have to follow. So you look to us to help provide that assistance in drafting the financial statements. Um, and so that is why it is, uh, considered a finding then because of the assistance that we provide with that. The second one is material audit adjustments. And what that relates to is that we, as we do go through the audit, we do propose certain audit adjustments to some of the numbers. Especially when it relates to kind of unique accounting situations. Due to, um, certain standards that you have to follow. And so, um. That is considered, uh, finding if they're significant enough of audit adjustments. And so we do propose them. Um, again, to get the financial statements in accordance with GAAP. Then the last one there, that's, as I said, less, considered less severe as a significant deficiency is called. Limited segregation of duties. And this relates to the various accounting processes, um, that we review journal entries. May payroll, making disbursements, receiving funds. So in all those different transactional processes, one person shouldn't be able. To initiate a transaction. They shouldn't be reconciling it, um, and they shouldn't be able to report on it. Um, however, due to the minimal staff that you have in certain areas working through some of those transactional processes. It, um, you're not able to necessarily split those different duties completely separate. Um, and, and it's not cost effective maybe to hire on more individuals to be able to segregate them, um, further. So the key there though is to continually look at your processes and see if there's mitigating controls within those processes. Is to help mitigate the, um, the, um, chance of error or fraud occurring. So as I said, those are the three findings that we have reported in the past. Uh, we reported them again this year. There's no additional or new findings though for twenty twenty-one. And so that is a positive that there was nothing added. The next section then is just a few other items that aren't necessarily require, don't. Um, stem to the severity of a material weakness or significant deficiency, but we just. Um, feel that it's necessary to, uh, communicate with governance and management. As far as, as we do go through the audit. Um, it, we do look to, we should be receiving reconciliations of certain account balances. And, um, so that we can look at the information and, and see that the balance looks, uh, looks correct and is supported. And so, um, in some of these instances over the last few years with some of the transition with your accounting system a few years ago and that. Some additional transitions with staffing, um, some of these reconciliations haven't necessarily been completely available by the time of the audit. And so, um, that is what this, uh. Additional item relates to is just, um, continually looking to be able to provide those reconciliations and into the future. So those are the overall findings and results that, uh, we wanted to share with you. And then we can get into some of the numbers actually. And so. Sorry, I have some notes here, so just going to flip through. So we will go to page eight. Where we see some of the actual numbers then. So here in item number one is your general operating fund. And you'll see, uh, how, how we have presented in the past as well as we show four years of activity here. So you can see how things have changed. Over the last couple of years. Um, and I won't go over every line item in here, but, um, just. Point out a few of maybe the major changes from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. So in this top part is your assets. And you'll see that your cash balance actually increased quite significantly from last year from four point eight million to thirteen million. And so that, um, is kind of a result of, um, a couple of different factors. Um, one is that you did receive four point four million in ARPA funding. And so that wasn't necessarily applied against any expenditures and spent. And so that is part of the increase of that cash balance. Um, you, you didn't actually, uh. Apply any of the, of the, the ARPA funding against expense. So the other item that increased quite a bit. Then in the liability section is unearned revenue went from ten million to fifteen million. And so that's where the opposite side of it is. So once you start applying that funding to expenditures. Then that will come off your balance sheet and actually be recognized as revenue. Um, and then you'll have it to offset whatever expenditure you, you have corresponding to it. So, um, back up to cash though, a couple of the additional factors of why the increase, um, and. In addition to the four point four million of ARPA funding was that, uh, NDC, the neighbors had a positive year. And so they were able to transfer some funding back over to help offset some of that, the debt that the. Um, was restructured last year and that the county, um, took responsibility for. And so, uh, one point three million. Was transferred over to the county, uh, from the neighbors. And then human services, um, the county has a policy to zero out the human services fund balance each year. And so human services had a positive result for the year. Of revenues exceeding expenditures by one point six million. And so that was able to be transferred back to the. The general fund here too, um, for the year. And so, um, with those, uh, factors that I just mentioned. And, um, some additional factors as far as sales tax being about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars above budget. And then you had some sales of tax deed properties of about two hundred thousand. Your overall change in fund balance, which is the net of your assets less your liabilities. And so what you really have in. Reserve, you may have heard that it called that before, is that your fund balance increased four point eight million. In twenty twenty-one and you end up with a total fund balance of seventeen point two million at the end of twenty twenty-one. So again, positive results there with those, um, multiple factors that kind of played into that increase in your fund balance. When we do look at that fund balance though, you'll see that it's broken out into three different categories. And so you have six hundred and thirty-eight thousand that's considered non-spendable. And so that is, um, items in your assets in your balance sheet that aren't really in a spendable form. They're not available cash. Or receivables considered to be collectible in the near future. And so that balance mostly relates to delinquent taxes that aren't collectible, as I said, um, near year end or. Um, shortly after year end. Then you have assignments, um, and what assignments are relates to, uh, uh. Items that the board has designated or identified, um, for funding to be used for, for specific purposes. And so there you'll see that, um, at the end of twenty twenty-one, your assignment. Your assigned fund balance is two point six million. And that consists of about one million dollars of carryovers that have been approved. Um, which includes, there's a two hundred thousand dollar amount for IT purposes. Three hundred ninety thousand for public works facilities and then, um, multiple other departments had carryovers as well. But those were some of the bigger ones. Then the rest of that two point six million, uh, one point six million. Uh, was used to balance your twenty twenty-two budget. So when you're going through the budget process and you can't get your. Revenues to balance with your expenditures, uh, you utilize available fund balance if you have available fund balance. And so that's what you did for the twenty twenty-two budget, um, is utilize one point six million of that. So ultimately then what you have is unassigned is what we kind of consider is available actually. And you'll see that that's at thirteen point nine million at the end of the year. And that had a substantial increase due to the increase that you saw on overall fund balance. And so the benchmarks that we look at there is that unassigned fund balance. To your, uh, annual expenditures for the year. And so that percentage gets you at sixty point six percent. And, um, the general recommendation of that percentage is to be about twenty-five to thirty-three percent. Um, in the, with the counties that we work with in Northwest Wisconsin, we, we see an average, um, of it being closer to thirty-five to forty-five percent. And that's kind of where you've fallen in the last few years is within that average range that we've seen. Um, and this year then obviously at the end of twenty twenty-one, you can see that it, it was increased quite a bit to that sixty percent at the end of the year. Um, again, just due to that overall increase that, that you saw with some of those other factors, increasing your fund balance overall. So that is the, um, general fund results. And so we will move down into the special revenue fund section. And special revenue funds are just kind of considered self-sustaining funds. So it's where. Um, activity is recorded for certain activities. You have funds coming in for them and to pay for certain activities and operations. And so here you'll see. I had mentioned human services already that it's the county policy to zero that fund out. Um, and in the last, this year, they were able to transfer back to the general fund one point six million. Um, in some years, they, they've had a deficit maybe and the general fund has had to transfer in there, but. Um, for the last three years, they've actually been able to transfer back to the general fund. So positive results there. Um, as far as their revenues compared to their expenditures. Then, um, you have some smaller funds there, the jail assessment fees. You'll see that the fund balance at the end of the year, uh, went back up. Uh, it had dipped down last year due to some spend down of funding, um, for some upgrades and projects that you had occurring at the jail. Um, with a solid waste fund. With a solid waste fund, even though that activity subsided in 2020. Or sorry, 2021, you'll see that the fund balance actually increased at during 2021. Due to some sale of property and equipment that you had over there. So. Those funds can can be utilized then for the particular purposes that is are determined there. And then with the CDBG revolving loan funds. That can ebb and flow between years depending on what repayments you receive and. What what loans are issued. And so here you'll see that the the fund balance increased quite substantially from 88,000 last year to 154,000. And that's with. Loan repayments of $80,000 and only new loans of $15,000 were issued. So that's why we saw that increase. The next page, next item is the debt service fund. And so this is purely for that purpose of levying or transfer transferring funds in to pay for your current principal and interest payments on debt. And so here you'll see that generally, there's usually a small. Fund balance in here, if anything, because you only are putting over what you need. But here you'll see in the last two years that that balance is substantial at the 13.9 million. And that is due to what's what was a crossover refunding. In 2020 and that debt was issued to pay off old outstanding debt. But that payoff didn't occur until 2022. So that's why you see the 13 million on there last year and this year. And then in 2022, you'll see that balance come back down. Once that old debt has actually been called and paid off, which it was in in April of 2022. So. That balance will be back down to a pretty low balance, what we would expect normally. So. And in 2021, you, out of this fund, you paid 3.5 million in principal. And 1.4 million in interest costs towards your debt for the year. Then in the capital projects funds, you'll see this, the this is a fund that can really. Have significant changes from year to year due to, usually this is where you issue funds, issue debt. To pay for particular capital purchases and projects. And so in 2021, there was 1.2 million of debt issued into this fund. And then some of that was spent down on capital projects and purposes. And then the the rest of it will be used as the additional projects occur. So then we move into what are called enterprise funds. And so these are reported more somewhat like a business in a way. And so we have the highway department as one of your enterprise funds. And I'm not going to go over every line item here, too. We show a little bit more detail. But I'll just focus here at the top and the. That the last few years, the highway department hasn't necessarily had available cash at the end of the year. And so there is a inter-fund loan. Between the general fund and the highway department for that cash deficit at the end of the year. You will see at the bottom, though, here that the overall change in that position the last couple of years. The highway department has seen quite some big bigger deficits, but this year actually saw a positive 697,000 dollar. Positive revenue over expenditure for the year, change in that position. So that was a good result for the the highway department there. A benchmark that we look at, though, is called the current ratio. And so that is what the current assets, the available cash, the current receivables compared to the current liabilities are. And you want that to be at least one to one. And you'll see that over the last three years that has been under that one to one ratio that you'd like to see. So again, that's. A big result of the cash being not being available. And no cash balance there to pay for the the current liabilities. So that is why there is the big loan. Or a bigger inter-fund loan with the general fund. For the neighbors, another enterprise fund that the county reports. Here you'll see, again, there's no cash balance here. But that is ma- mainly due to that they did have positive results for the year. Of 1.3 million. Of revenues exceeding expenditures by that much. And that then that was transferred over. The available cash in this fund was transferred over to the general fund. To to help pay off some of that outstanding debt for that the that is outstanding and the general county is covering. For the newer facility that was built in 2012, 2013. And so you'll see that from, if you do some comparisons here. That there are some bigger changes from 19 to 20. Because of that debt restructuring last year. But now you'll see that there's comparable information from 2020 to 2021. And how the results have been shown. And so this 27 million last year of transfers in was that that debt restructuring. So that was a unique instance last year. The other enterprise fund that is reported by the county is the transit commission. And here you'll see that the transit commission had a positive change in that position of $98,000 for the year. So. Positive results for the last three years there. And I had mentioned the current ratio for the highway department. And here you'll see that. Transit Commission has 5.3 is the ratio of their current assets to their current liabilities. So well over that one to one ratio that we'd like to see. So. The last type of fund that the county reports are called internal service funds. And so this is. Where it's somewhat providing services within itself. And so here you have your workers' comp, where your workers' comp activity is summarized. And you'll see that there is almost kind of a break even year in 2021. So you've had a couple of good years as far as. Your premiums and items coming into here have been in excess of of the claims that you've seen. In your health insurance fund, you'll see that. Positive results here as well for the year. And so you've had some higher claims years in the past few years. And so here, obviously, this was a good result to see a positive change in that position of 670,000 dollars. So. Again, then that means that your premiums and items coming into this fund were. Well, were very sufficient compared to the claims that you had for the year. And so that brought the net position back up to 1.6 million. That you have in that fund to to pay for future costs and claims incurred. So that is going through all the different funds and kind of the different buckets that the the county has to report their operations. And. The last item that we like to focus on here. In this executive audit summary is your long term obligations that you have outstanding. And so here you'll see on the top line is what your is where your general obligation bonds and notes are summarized. And you'll see that you have 46 million outstanding at the end of 2021. Again, if you if you look at 2019, that increased quite a bit to 2020 because of that crossover refunding that I talked about. So. You somewhat have two debt issues that are in the 2020 and 2021 balance, but that will come back down in 2022. Because that that debt was called and paid off. But what what we do see here is we look at that general obligation outstanding. Compared to what your debt limit is. Every county, municipality, school district in the state has a debt limit. For the county, it's 5% of your equalized value within the county. And so you're you'll see that your debt limit is 191 million. And so the 46 million that you have outstanding is 24.4% that you're using of your debt limit. And the county average that we see is that it kind of ranges from 0 to 20% there. And so you're a little bit above that 20%, but that we generally see, but you're not much over it. And then. When you factor in that 13 million dollars that will be paid off or that is paid off now in 2022. You you fall right around 17 to 19% the last couple of years. So. Right, right within the range, a comfortable amount of debt outstanding for the the limit that you do have. The other couple of things that we do show in this section then is simply the compensated absences. So what your employees have earned as of 123121 in sick vacation type leave. That will be paid out in the future when that's taken. And so it's estimated at about 2.9 million for your governmental activities, your general fund, human services. Those types of activities. And about 1.4 million for your business activities. So that's your highway fund. The neighbors and transit commission that that balance relates to. So as I said, this is what we feel are the key pieces of information for you to know as far as the overall results for the year. And so that is is kind of the the end of what I would like to present. So I don't know, generally, we might open it up for questions if.
Yes. So do I have any questions from supervisors? Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Yeah, just at the very end there, I didn't catch the number, the percentage general obligation dead limit. It was five point something, but more more important than that, give me that figure again, but. Is that percentage? By statute, or? Does it change? Is it? Is it the same figure that municipalities have or? Or other counties or how do we, the 5.1%?
Yep, it's a statutory debt limit is what it relates to. And so it is 5% for counties and municipalities. For school districts, it's 10%.
Any reason for that, that you would, as an accountant, would say? School districts would have such a greater extent?
I don't know when that, it's always been that percentage as long as I've I've worked with governmental entities. So I don't know when that was determined in in the background behind that. But I I generally know that. School districts, I I guess I don't have a specific answer as far as where that came from and how long it's been around. At that percentage.
Just probably have more friends. Thank you.
Any other questions for April? I I'm not seeing any. There we go. Supervisor Headland.
Hearing no other questions, I would, at this point, Chair of the Committee, the committee did pass to bring this forward for your acceptance. And so I would, at this time, so move that we accept the report. And the. Along with, excuse me, along with that with the total audit report.
Do I have a second? Supervisor Roger, seconds. Do I have any further speaking to the resolution? Seeing none, all in favor? Oh, wait, sorry, Supervisor Morehouse. Okay. All right, so. Seeing no further comments or questions, all in favor of accepting the report? Any opposed? Word is accepted. Thank you, April.
Thank you. Have a good rest of the evening.
You, too. All right, on to item 11, consideration of resolutions, reports and ordinances from the Standing Committee. Item A, Executive Committee Resolution approving FY 2022 budget adjustments for Sheriff's Department and Health Department. This is one of our typical bookkeeping, money comes in, money goes out. We need to adjust the budget as 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 it does. Do I have a motion? To approve the resolution? Supervisor Calabrese, Calabrese, sorry, do I have a second? Supervisor Gilbert. Any questions about the resolution? Supervisor Lino.
Here, I I don't really necessarily have a question, but on page 133. Basically, under Administration Criminal Justice Collaboration Division. I see that we've got a $150,000 grant was awarded for a behavioral health officer. I I just have a question regarding that. Has that person been hired?
I don't believe they have been hired yet. Supervisor Calabrese, correct me if I'm wrong on that.
I don't think they have either.
So that 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 person doesn't exist as an employee of the county, then?
They do not yet exist as an employee of the county.
All right.
Actually, Sarah Benedict is online, and I believe the physician has been hired, but she.
Okay. And do we have a name?
So thank you for the opportunity to speak. So yes, so there has been a job opening and a a person has been selected. It is Rebecca Maryfield with the Sheriff's Office. She's very experienced. So if this grant is approved, the funding will begin for that position. And then her position, current position will be backfilled and hired for.
Thank you, Sarah, and thank you, Chris, for the correction.
All right. Thank you very much.
Any further comments or questions on the resolution? I gotta turn my head a lot more with this arrangement to make sure I see everybody. Seeing none, since this is a budget adjustment, it's a roll call vote?
Supervisor Hagan.
Aye.
Supervisor Hartong. Supervisor Headland. Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Kneer. Supervisor Keter. Supervisor Lino. Supervisor Morehouse. Supervisor Prochnow. Supervisor Quinn. Supervisor Rogers. Supervisor Robinson. Supervisor Score. Supervisor Thomas. Supervisor Vandermeulen. Supervisor Vogel. Supervisor Willsey. Supervisor Whitzel. Supervisor Zons. Supervisor Bauer. Supervisor Barrier. Supervisor Gary Bjork. Supervisor Larry Bjork. Supervisor Sean Breslin. Supervisor Calabrese. Supervisor Gilbert. Chair McCullough.
Yes. Motion passes. Item B, Planning, Resource and Development Committee. We have a series of reasons here. Supervisor Quinn, did you want to address those? Oh.
Sorry, can I just go back? There's actually two budget adjustment resolutions. One was from August and one was from September.
Oh.
Yeah, I bet you don't have, there was a revised agenda. I'm sorry, there's a revised agenda that went out. I don't know what day. But there is a second budget adjustment. Approving, and the documents were in the packet, approving. The 2022 budget for highway veterans, human services, CJCC. Oh, maybe that's one. Yeah, CJCC and health.
All right, thank you. That one was was not on the agenda I'm reading from here, so thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the second of those? Supervisor Morehouse moves. Do I have a second? Supervisor Robinson. Again, a budget adjustment, any speaking to the resolution? Seeing none, roll call vote?
Supervisor Hartong, Supervisor Hartong votes, yes, Supervisor Headland. Supervisor Headland votes, yes, Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Johnson votes, yes, Supervisor Kneer. Supervisor Kneer votes, yes, Supervisor Keter. Supervisor Keter votes, yes, Supervisor Lino. Supervisor Lino votes, yes, Supervisor Morehouse. Supervisor Morehouse votes, yes, Supervisor Prochnow. Supervisor Prochnow votes, yes, Supervisor Quinn. Supervisor Quinn votes, yes, Supervisor Robinson. Supervisor Robinson votes, yes, Supervisor Rogers. Supervisor Rogers votes, yes, Supervisor Score. Supervisor Score votes, yes, Supervisor Thomas. Supervisor Thomas votes, yes, Supervisor Vandermeulen. Supervisor Vandermeulen votes, yes, Supervisor Vogel. Supervisor Vogel votes, yes, Supervisor Willsey. Supervisor Willsey votes, yes, Supervisor Whitzel. Supervisor Whitzel votes, yes, Supervisor Zons. Supervisor Zons votes, yes, Supervisor Bauer. Supervisor Bauer votes, yes, Supervisor Barrier. Supervisor Barrier abstains. Supervisor Gary Bjork. Supervisor Gary Bjork votes, yes, Supervisor Larry Bjork. Supervisor Larry Bjork votes, yes, Supervisor Sean Breslin. Supervisor Sean Breslin votes, yes, Supervisor Calabrese. Supervisor Calabrese votes, yes, Supervisor Gilbert. Supervisor Gilbert votes, yes, Supervisor Hagan.
Yes.
Supervisor Hagan votes, yes, Chair McCullough.
Yes.
Yes.
Chair McCullough votes yes.
Motion passes. Thank you for catching that, Chris. Okay, now. The Planning Resource and Development Committee uh rezone ordinances. Supervisor Quinn, if you wanna.
There, we the committee out with three rezones and had had hearings on on them. Uh they're all three the same. So I'll offer a, I think we need to take motion on them separately.
I think, yeah, that could be.
Okay, so I'll, but the explanation will be the same, just their requests from landowners and along Lake Lake Tainer. Uh where there were older lots, sometimes very small lots that were established uh quite a long time ago. And they uh no, they didn't really comply with our residential zoning, so they're not uh large enough to have dwellings on them. And septic systems or whatever, but the residents often use them just recreational purposes. So uh in order to clarify that and assure that they were allowed to use them for that purpose, they requested a rezone. Into Shoreland Recreational, which provides for that use and the use of a temporary uh shelter in the in the summertime. So with that, um I would move that we uh approve item.
B one.
B one.
Okay, motion by Supervisor Quinn. Do I have a second? Supervisor Morehouse. Uh any further speaking to the resolution? Seeing none, all in favor?
And then with the same, with the same uh uh explanation, I'd move approval of uh eight.
Just one second. Any opposed?
I'm sorry.
Motion passes. All right.
How could there be opposition to such good government?
B two?
B two, please, I move.
All right, do I have a second? Supervisor Kneer. Uh any further speaking? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move the third.
B three, and do I have a second for B three? Supervisor Breslin. Any further speaking? Seeing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, the rezones are taken care of. Uh on to C Committee on Administration. Item one, Resolution Rescending Resolution twenty fifteen dash sixty. Um oh Supervisor Headland.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh this is a uh change uh in our process for handling. Um special assessments and taxing uh that goes on in the county. And if you note, the explanation is there in the background information. Uh we, the current policy that we were under was changed by the County Board and back in fifteen. And at that point, the uh I guess I say history of what was going on was such that we felt uh this would be a chance to. Get the funds right out to the townships and uh take care of uh all that funding right away. However, recent history has proved that uh a lot of these funds come in very slowly over time. And uh sometime takes some special uh work to achieve those funds. And so we're going back to a process where we would pay those funds out as we receive them. Uh so that we we could continue to settle the funding with the townships or the affected uh uh governments. But we would do it as the funds are received. So that's the change. Instead of paying it all out ahead of time, we would pay it out as it comes in.
Thank you, Supervisor Headland. Can I get a motion for the resolution? Supervisors Ons uh makes motion, Supervisor Lino seconds. Any further speaking to the resolution, questions on the technicalities? All right, uh all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. Any opposed? Motion passes. Resolution amending the inventory of job classes. Supervisor Headland?
Uh thank you again, Mr. Chair. Uh if you look, again, this is a pretty well spelled out in your packet. Uh the purpose of this resolution is to add a position at the neighbors. Um it would involve uh having a registered nurse RN training specialist. Uh again, the uh someone from the neighbors would wish to speak on the necessity of this. I'd be glad to share the time.
Is Carmen online?
Jenna.
Jenna, do you want to address this? And and it's my understanding that this is, it creates the availability for the position. The position has not, we have not yet decided to activate that position. This is just the first step so that should we decide to hire someone, we will be able to do so on a relatively quick basis.
Sure. Um so I've been working closely with Carmen Meyer, the community mentor at the neighbors. In. Working to create an onsite CNA training program within the neighbors' facilities. The goal of that would be to address some of the recruitment and staffing challenges with CNAs. It's been reported that when there's an onsite training program, often the CNA will stay and work at that facility, and that would be the hope. Also, there would be a cost for the training program, so that would be a potential um revenue source, of course. Understanding that it would offset partially um the cost of this position. So in order to begin that process to become licensed for that program. A specific position has to be appointed to be the instructor. Um so that is the purpose of the training specialist. We didn't currently have a classification that already exists for that. So um we are working through the process to add it to the inventory so that we can. Fill that position if the neighbors committee decides to move forward with. Implementing the program.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Mike, did you want to add anything from the neighbors' point of view?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh we fully support uh working really hard to get a CNA program there, whether it's through this or another one. And we've been working for years. Carmen's been working hard at it and. The state certainly has interesting ways of slowing things down, but uh we have been working hard at it and Jenna's done a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Kneer. Yes, as someone who's formerly been on the the neighbors committee. Um one of our great challenges there is um recruiting and retaining staff, and it is the hope that. Uh having an onsite training facility would allow us to do that. Any further questions or comments speaking to the resolution? Supervisor Headland. I think we already had.
Nope.
Okay, so Supervisor Headland moves, second. Supervisor Larry Bjork.
I'll second it, but I'd also like to uh. Uh what Mike had to say is um neighbors works really hard, doing a good job, and uh. They're 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 always right at the top as far as after their um inspections. And uh. I I I think I've got this right. If not, I'll know tomorrow morning at the meeting. It's 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 odd how something as important as uh healthcare for seniors. And uh the training of people to fill those positions and what good jobs they are. And uh the 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 neighbor struggles with uh uh traveling nurses. And uh you you know, I I guess I I can tell one story about, you know, it's it's one thing if your staff is uh local. And uh the uh. Person that has to leave the facility for a period of time to go pick up a sick kid at school and take him home and then come back to work. You know, that we can do that. But if the person is a traveling person, nurse, in 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 a skilled nursing facility. And their dog is making a ruckus at the motel where they're staying at, and they have to leave the neighbors to go take care of their dog, I think that's a problem. So if we can train CNNs, uh CNAs uh locally, it I I'm all for it. And I can see nothing but uh uh great success uh coming from it.
Thank you, Supervisor Bjork. Any further speaking, Supervisor Rogers?
So I guess my concern is that we're spending ninety six thousand dollars for a trainer position. That there's really no guarantee that that position is gonna encourage any additional employees to come to work for the neighbors. So I'm not, I'm not saying it isn't a good idea, but prior to moving forward with hiring this person. I just have a little bit of reserve as far as. Are we gonna get any return on this, or are there other avenues to go about to recruit? I know it's hard to recruit, and I'm not saying we don't need it, and I'm not saying any of that. But at the same time, I I just question whether or not this is the most cost effective way to approach this. So prior to filling that position, I would hope that we would evaluate whether the payoff is actually there in the recruitment. That we're hoping to get is is actually likely to happen.
Um and I believe that the neighbors committee is exploring that as one of several options, so that is absolutely one of their considerations. Do I have any further comments or questions? Uh seeing none, all in favor of the resolution?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Um that takes us to announcements. Um Supervisor Johnson.
Yes, thank you. Yes, I'm on. I'd like to remind everyone about the highway bus tour uh next Wednesday. Meet at seven forty five at the Highway Shop South Parking Lot. Uh we'll leave at eight and we should be back by noon. And Dustin, I believe you would like to know if they are coming, so we have a big enough bus, correct? Okay. So, hope to see you there.
Nick, did you want to address that at all?
If you would, yes. Uh technically, this would constitute a meeting of the county board if there are enough members uh on the bus. It will certainly constitute a meeting of the highway committee. So it's very important, uh this is an information collecting tour, so you're going to see roads and. Receive information about different county highways uh during this bus tour from Dustin and maybe other highway staff. This is very important um because of the nature of, so it's a mobile. It's very important that there be no discussion. Um you know, sort of no business discussion uh like you would ordinarily expect to engage in at a meeting. It's for collecting information from highway staff. And you may ask questions or seek clarification or prompt additional uh information. If you want, you can bring notebooks with you, um jot down things, and you can send them to Supervisor Johnson as the chair of the highway committee. Or Supervisor McCullough as the county board chair. And he will, will or the county manager, uh and and they will get dispatched to the highway commissioner. Um in an effort to provide you with additional information. But you just need to be cautious because of the nature of this uh with limited ability of the public to be present. Uh it's a very important that discussions of a businesslike nature not occur. That's all.
Thank you, Nick. Do I have any other announcements? Okay, I've got uh one of my own. It has been the tradition of this board, particularly for newer members, to have the opportunity to visit other committees. So if you would like to uh find out what is happening with the other committees, I would strongly encourage that. And um we will cheerfully sign a per diem if you are at someone else's meeting, learning how the board operates. Um finally, our next meeting will be Wednesday, October nineteenth at seven o'clock here. And with that, we are adjourned.